May I see you from the place, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is Monday, August 7th. If any questions or business with this council, public comment, or during question times, you come to one of my phones, give us your name and address, and tell us what's on your mind. Call the roll, please.
Cedar?
Here.
Ellery?
Here.
Kinsfatter?
Here.
Cleman?
Here.
Cooper?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
McCartney?
Here.
All present, your honor.
All right, thank you. We'll go to consent agenda. A, city council, minutes of July 17th, 2017, regular meeting, recommendation approved. B, the cemetery board of trustees, minutes of July 5th, 2017, meeting recommendation received. And for C is the resignation from the housing commission, except with regrets.
I'll make a motion to approve A through C as presented.
Support.
All right, the motion made in support of questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can we send a letter of thank you to Joyce Fredericks for serving? Thank you. We have a public hearing tonight under number five, variance request, section 8.32, schedule assigned requirements, Warwater LLC. Is this Mr. Shorty, or?
I think we can have the petitioner come up and speak.
All right, Chris, you want to come up and just kind of tell us what's going on?
We've requested a signed variance. I've got three different parts in this request. Just want to make sure I'm covering all the bases. The first sign that we got involved with was unaware of what the ordinances were. So it was the first time that we've made aware of how everything's got to handle. So I submitted the original sign that we have, as well as two other signs that we'd like to put up. One of them's a lighted sign that's been there for, I'll take a guess, between 10 and 20 years. It had a bunch of old businesses on there that were no longer in the plaza. So we took the plastic, peeled the vinyl off, and re-vinyl it, cleaned it up, and got it to light back up with changing some bulbs in it. The second sign is where A1 computers used to be. It's becoming our shipping and handling, shipping and receiving area. So they took down a four-by-eight sign. Structure's still there with the lights. We'd like to replace the sign with a four-by-eight to identify the shipping and handling and make it look a little bit nicer than a vacant sign. And then there's a small, little post that sticks out around the corner going in. It's a little four-by-four post. It's got a small blade sign on there. We'd like to just put a small sign on there so it looks nicer. Same thing, more water, shipping and receiving. That's basically our request.
Tell me about the sign that's in the very first one, the plastic one. This is what's going to happen with that sign?
That sign, long term, we know that it's on the corridor and that it is not according to the ordinance. So what we would like to do, once we move into the production facility, which we've started the engineering on, we procured the building as of March 1st, we would like to take that lighted sign, relocate it into the inside of the brewery, which will be a very large space, and plug it in and just kind of carry it over as a kind of a historical timeline marker type item. We'd like to leave it up and in place until then because of the cost involved, and it does help people know that our doorway is inside of the corridor. Guessing that's probably no less than six months, no more than 24 months, getting that in place.
Help me out, Mayor. Where is that sign now, number one? Where's that located?
If you, you have Ace Hardware, when you come up to that corridor to your right, and then you've got the short building to your left. As you walk into that corridor, it's about 20 feet back from the end of the buildings, right about those corridors.
I can see it now, okay. All right, thanks, Chris. All right.
The former A1 sign, the framing, is that, that's the one that was four-by-eight?
Correct.
And that framing is built for four-by-eight, and that's what you're talking about?
That's what we're requesting, yeah.
That's what you're putting it on?
Yeah. We'd like to put up signs similar to what we've done. They're metal. Instead of being, I think what the verbiage says, it needs to be raised lettering, we've done the opposite and actually cut out all the metal, so it's recessed lettering. We believe it's in the same spirit of what the sign ordinance was looking for, instead of getting that flat, blank, two-dimensional look, a little bit something nicer. So we're just doing the opposite with the sign.
Mr. Downey, how is this violating the ordinance we have now?
I probably have to defer to Mr. Bowyer on the particulars, but I think as to the, as to the first sign, the one that has the plastic taken away, again, it is a, I believe it's considered to be a two-dimensional sign, not a raised letter sign. And as to the particulars on the second and third signs, I do not know.
Okay.
Just, go ahead.
My understanding is that there's a limit on height. You have so much square footage that you can have, but it can only be two foot tall. So we're asking, with both signs, or all three signs, I believe we're well within the square footage allotment based on the size of the building that we own, we're just asking, instead of it being two foot and super long, that we just consolidate it to, you know, it'll be Warwater Brewery, shipping and receiving, basically, two signs, you know, four foot tall and eight foot wide, instead of two foot tall and 16 feet long, just based on the structure that's there today.
Okay.
Down the road, that could change, you know, if we remodel the exterior of the building and move forward with some enhancements. But at this time, it just makes sense to use what's there and make it look a little nicer.
So those, the restroom sign that's in the mall pointing to the restrooms, obviously, that's the same, I don't know, motif's the right word, or style you're going to use there?
Yep. I've got a couple additional pictures that I took I can hand to the group if they want to look at. I took a photo from curbside on Third Street to give you an idea of size of building and size of sign. It really puts it in perspective of four-by-eight standing here, since it's huge. When you take 200 feet off the sign, they disappear. But I have those if you'd like them.
Does anybody want to see those pictures?
I kind of got a general idea of what I'm looking at. I'm not telling anyone. Your honor, probably before, some of us were on council, this one that's lettered or numbered number one, obviously, there had to have been a variance granted to the previous owners of that building for that 48 by 48 sign, or 48 by 96.
That was before the council became the ZPA for the mall. And if I remember right, are all the signs based on square footage, the size of the building?
I don't think, no. I asked Dee that today.
Dee's not here.
Dave Shirkid, you know?
I'm sorry? What was the question?
Counselor member? The ordinance was updated in 2011, so that sign was in compliance prior to that.
Okay.
So I believe the request is for the new sign to be the same size as the old sign, which was in compliance.
Okay.
Correct. But meeting the raised or recessed lettering requirement.
Tom, were you on our planning commission when we did this site?
Yep, yep. Then I came on in council. I remember the ordinance being adopted by council. Yeah, I worked with you on the sign ordinances back in '08, '09.
That was a two-year process.
Well, but some of the things that we're getting out of control, Mike, wasn't so much the signs that we're talking about today, it was the fact that we were having banners and balloons and kites and the air-operated funny-looking things that flap up and around all of it. I mean, those things were getting out of control, and I think that's what kind of forced us to look at signs. I mean, it really, and then the other thing too, and I think that we were trying to get control of is, we had to have some type of framework for people to follow. I mean, it didn't need to be so restrictive, you couldn't advertise your business, but the framework in which we had to follow. But I remember those issues, Mike, being that we had these things all over the place.
Well, and two, we worked with our planning consultant and sort of came up with the theme that we wanted in the downtown, so.
Well, I'm not going to, I wouldn't argue that point with you. I remember that with when Skurdo was talking to us about what our theme was. But when I looked at the plaza in its whole, and since I got this packet and looked at your request, and also some of the requests from some other merchants in the plaza, it's very difficult for a person to advertise their business the way the plaza is built. Just, it's almost impossible, and if you're not a, if we're not a business-friendly community, then, you know, we may as well stop the meeting, in my opinion. But we look at that plaza today, and I look at the one out on Carney Drive, where there's a large marquee that advertises just about everything that goes on inside that area, and we don't have that downtown. So if I'm driving by, I wouldn't know that there's a bookstore, or there's a photography studio, and I'm a resident.
Yeah, it is difficult. It's an ongoing problem, I know, for the plaza. Signage has been a discussion for the last 10 years, and you've got businesses that have been there for 20 years that have outdated signs, you've got businesses that have been there in two years that have new signs that may or may not comply, and then you've got others. Part of the disconnect is just figuring out what the real process is, figuring out what you can do.
Chris, one of the things that, you know, when I, before I moved back to Michigan, there was a, Lake of the Ozarks was always a familiar tourist attraction, and one of the things that I don't want to see happen with St. Clair, with the plaza, and you're, now that you're actively involved with the association, is that turning into a Lake of the Ozarks-style location, that if we're going to grant sign ordinances, that we do have some uniformity, and some conformity as well, so that's my concern.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with your reference.
I know what you are, but I mean, any big tourist attraction.
Yeah, you definitely don't want it to look like the, you know, the seasonal up-north beach community where everything gets thrown out, and it's very generic, it's sale banners and clearance banners and 20 percent off, buy one, get one free. It's definitely not what we want for the community, and it's definitely not what we want to do. We want to put together some very nice signage professionally done.
Is there anything else from council?
Yeah, I got one. If I read this right, 18 square feet is the maximum on the two signs?
I'm not sure.
The two new signs? And you want 35 and a half, so you pretty much want twice as much as what's allowed?
Am I reading that right? I don't know. Is that based on 50,000 square feet, or 2,000, or is it non-discriminatory?
No idea what it's based on, it's just what we're in here.
Because that's my question, I guess, to the council, is if there is a maximum square footage, what's that based on? A 2,000 square foot unit, or a 50,000 square foot unit? Subdivide, rent to six different owners and put four different businesses in there that might be Warwater Sporting Goods, Warwater Shipping and Receiving, Warwater Brew Supplies, Warwater Tap Room, Warwater Brewery, Warwater Commercial Off, you know, like, is it, I get a sign, 16-square-foot sign for every single one of those, or do we get to do something grander and maybe have four or five of them? And I know that's from a design standpoint, we need to look at and be careful with. I know I'll be back when we get to the point of redoing the entire building to do something that's maybe etched or built into the building that's a little bit grander and more historical from a standpoint. That will definitely need a variance change as well, but we'll cross that bridge when we get there from a design standpoint.
Hey, Chris, that third sign, we're going to use the existing post?
Yeah, yeah, it's probably going to be.
Yeah, not too big. It's going to say the same thing as the first sign you presented us, right? Shipping and receiving?
Yes, yeah, just a small one.
That's on that side door, right there in that corridor, correct?
Correct, yeah.
They used to have a marquee down there, what, they took that out?
That was on the south end?
No, right in the middle.
Mm-hmm. That's been gone for a long time. A mechanical, oh, a mechanical one where you printed on it or something?
I think the original one got taken down by weather and old age. Because it was in the central courtyard.
I barely remember it.
Yeah, and then they had the large paintings around it.
That doesn't mean anything. Yesterday, I forgot a lot of stuff.
All right, in the spirit of this public hearing, you're more than welcome to come back up, but I'm going to open this up to the public, obviously, and the council certainly can enjoy this too. Does anybody from the public want to come up and, questions? Yes, sir.
Troy Martin, 1515 Oakland. I'm Chair of the Trustees at the Congregational Church, so I received information on this. I'm in support of what I've heard tonight. I think it sounds fine. He's been a great neighbor so far, you know, we have no problems whatsoever, so.
Thank you, Troy. Anybody else from the audience want to chip in?
Hi, Chris Troy, 205 North Third, Mayor, Council. My only concerns about it, and he's going to use pre-existing signs, that I would rather see you guys look at a variance for what he's looking at, as opposed to rewriting a whole ordinance. It just kind of seems that once you rewrite an ordinance, that could start a slippery slope, or whatever. You know, I've lived there on Third Street. It appears as though most people can find the bar, especially at 1:30, 2 o'clock in the morning, when everyone's leaving the bar. So it just, it just kind of seems like I would rather see, you know, when I first moved in the neighborhood, I was kind of, you know, told they were looking at making it the gaslight district, and historically minded, and landscaping, and I'm hoping that that motion is still in the works, are you guys finding a way to make that happen? My just concern is that if, you know, one place does it, if the ordinance is changed, and then someone else picks up on it, and the next thing, it's looking like M-59, which I think was kind of your concern, Tom. So that's kind of my only thought, is he's looking at using a pre-existing box, it sounds like, or sign that's there. That seems like it's a variance to that, not so much a full ordinance, so.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks, Chris.
Hi, Bill Schwartz. I've got a business at 110 South Third Street, so I'm kitty-corner from the mall. We've got signage that came with the building, and just want to voice my support for what Chris is doing. I'm familiar with the signs that he's asking for, and certainly, as a business owner across the street, don't have any issues with what he's talking about this evening, so just want to say that. Thanks.
Thanks, Bill. Excuse me. Anybody else want to come up for a minute?
I go down to Riverfest every year, collect cans and bottles, and the.
Alwin, we'll stop you for one second, okay? When we get to public comment, I'm going to have you come up for that at that point, okay? Because right now, we're in a public hearing about some variances.
Okay.
All right, so you come back in a little while, I'll let you know when to come up, right?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Anybody else on the public hearing for the variance request for Warwater Brewery? Anybody on council have anything else you want to add, question?
Your honor, I think that we have some questions on restrictions and clarification of the current ordinance. I think I'd like to see something from our planner, city planner, right? You know, we employ Kyle Wartman, they help us write the ordinance and that, and there's no recommendation from them at all. I like the idea that he's working within the same framework, but I think the total theme of everything has to be relooked at. You know, if we allow this variance, it sets a precedent, they're all, you know, the reason we put restrictions down there is to get a handle on it. Mr. McCartney, he's right. We worked on that sign ordinance for two years.
I would agree with you, Mike. My only, my only comment would be that, you know, we have these variance opportunities for, and applications for merchants like Chris to come in and present what he's trying to do as a business owner, and as a, not just that, but a tax base in St. Clair. I don't look at this thing any different than what we'd look at on Clinton Avenue with Ted's Coney Island. This isn't going to be the last business that comes to us for ordinances, for signage, for advertising. I would imagine that at some point in time, St. Clairian's going to probably want to come and talk to us about signings. We probably need to look at the sign ordinance again, but I don't think, I don't think it's, that's a reason to stop the progress that we're starting to make with him tonight, so.
Anybody else?
Make the motion to close the public hearing.
Support.
Motion made in support to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Public hearing is closed. We'll move on. Thank you. Thank you, folks, for your comments. Let's go to number six. Resolution 1712, accepting MDI and IR terms for Palmer Park Boardwalk replacement grant. Is that you, Mr. Booth?
I think, uh.
Oh, Trish, I'm sorry.
Trish Nyle.
Thank you, Mayor. I am pleased to announce that we received the project agreement from the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Development Project for the replacement of the Palmer Park Boardwalk. So it is required that we sign the agreement, and also a resolution to agree to all the terms of the agreement. Just to give you a brief description of what the project includes, it is, the total project agreement amount is $300,000, and that was the maximum amount that we could get from this grant. The state will provide a 75 percent match, and the city will provide a 25 percent match, which is $75,000. The project will replace the entire boardwalk, the wood benches, and the raised wooden deck area at the south of the park. It also includes the painting of the seawall and the railing along the St. Clair River. It is a reimbursable grant. We have until July of 2019 to complete the grant. We are planning on using our St. Clair County Parks and Recreation Village Funds and Community Foundation Funds to meet our local match. And the other thing, we are using a number-one grade treated lumber. That's what we included in our bid for the replacement of the boardwalk.
That's great news.
Yes. Very excited about it.
Finally.
Your honor, I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Support.
All right, the motion made in support, questions? Call the roll, please.
Ellery?
Yes.
Kinsfatter?
Yes.
Cleman?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Laporte?
Yes.
McCartney?
Yes.
Cedar?
Yes.
Resolution adapted, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Good work, Trish.
Thank you, yes.
Nice work.
All right, B, 1713, schedule a public hearing for the Commercial Redevelopment District.
Your honor, I can handle that. Counsel, before you, is a request to schedule a public hearing for the Commercial Redevelopment District. You'll recall that the Commercial Redevelopment District was approved actually by council at the end of June, but because of a procedural defect in the hearing on that, it was subsequently rescinded, and we're simply, this is, we're just retracing our steps. This will be back on for your consideration for reapproval of the district at the August 21st meeting.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Do we need a time for that, or not?
It's seven o'clock.
Seven?
Yes, please.
Motion made in support and questions? Call the roll, please.
Kinsfatter?
Yes.
Cleman?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Laporte?
Yes.
McCartney?
Yes.
Ellery?
Yes.
Cedar?
Yes.
Carrie, your honor.
Thank you. We will go to C, Resolution 1714, authorization to participate in the MEDC's redevelopment-ready Communities Program.
I have that, your honor. The state, the state has established a statewide redevelopment-ready community program, which is an RRC. St. Clair's participation in the RRC will enable potential investors, such as those of the St. Clairian, to obtain financial support from the Michigan Economic Development Corp. There are several steps to the process which must be checked off prior to October 1st of this year. During the first half of this year, I attended what's considered best practice training sponsored by the MEDC. That's done. The second item that we needed to take care of is this resolution, so tonight, that'll take care of the second thing. And then the final checkbox that we need to take care of is a, excuse me, self-evaluation of our development readiness. And I want to say that's a, maybe a 12-page document that looks at our zoning and different things that we, the one we had on tonight, signs and things like that. How does that person come in from outside and look and say, how do I establish the business here? So that will be going on once the resolution is done. I just ask for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Support that motion.
Any questions?
I got one. Who can they get money from, Mike?
Some MEDC, the Michigan Economic Development Corp. So I know a lot of the different companies that have come in, and they want to do something in our downtown. If we don't do this, those businesses will not be eligible.
All right, so they're the only one that they can get money from?
Well, there's other areas that would be one. I mean, there's federal tax credits, there's all kinds of things that can be done. But if you want help from the state on a project, this is one of the requirements.
Does this include the city? Does this include money from the city if they, through this?
I'm sorry, I'm not.
Could they get, could they get money from the city with the passage of this?
No, this is through the MEDC.
All right.
The other would be something through another tax avenue, whether it's an IFT or some sort of tax abatement.
Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Cleman?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Laporte?
Yes.
McCartney?
Yes.
Ellery?
Yes.
Kinsfatter?
Yes.
Cedar?
Yes.
Carrie, your honor.
All right, thank you. Score number seven, reports administration. A, city superintendent, Mr. Booth?
Got a few items, mostly road-related this evening. Tremble Street, this project is complete, with the exception of a few closeout items. We've got a couple drainage spots where we have water sitting around, and potentially some grass seed and things like that that need to be taken care of. Fredmore Highway, the county project is open to traffic, I'm sure everyone here knows, but maybe some don't. St. Clair Highway, the contractor, this would be at M-29, the contractor did some prep work today, and they're going to pour the second half of that tomorrow. Hopefully, the weather cooperates. October road projects, I'm reviewing funding to see if we can complete some additional roads prior to September 30, which would be in this fiscal year, or we may need to delay them to October, but I would like to get something else done this fall yet. City has rented a street sweeper, you should see that out on the streets this week. I know they were running it earlier, I was over there. And then crack sealing will begin soon. We have not, actually, we did a little bit early in the season, but not much. They will be out doing that now that they've completed some catch basins, and I think there's one more spot on the road. There's a spot at the corner of Clinton and M-29, typically because that's a state highway, the county does it, and then they'll bill it back to us. They've indicated they're a little bit too busy to do it, so they've asked that we do it ourselves, and that's for water main break that we had. That's all I have.
Any questions from?
I do have a question. Have we heard anything back from Smoothie Oil Company on the survey for St. Clair Highway that they said they were going to do for us?
I believe you'll hear something at our next council meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else? All right. B, Mr. Downey, do you have anything?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
All right. C, city departments.
Yes, there are a few municipalities within St. Clair County having an election tomorrow. The city of St. Clair is not one of them, so we do not have an election tomorrow. That's all, your honor.
All right. D, authorities, boards and commissions, anybody? All right, E, we have no unfinished business. We'll go to number nine, new business. All right, A is the variance request, section 832, schedule assigned requirements. We're going to take these three requests individually.
Your honor, I'd make a motion to approve the variance as presented.
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you.
We can bust these down to three, can't we?
I'm sorry?
Can we bust this into three separate signs?
Yes, Your Honor. Oh, you want a separate sign?
Who else?
You think it's necessary?
Maybe.
Oh.
But if you make a motion, you make a motion. You make the motion.
I would make the motion to approve this variance as presented.
I'll support.
All right, the motion made and supported to approve the variances for all three signs asked by the petitioner.
Yes.
All right, any questions? All right, call the roll, please.
Koopa?
Yes.
Laporte?
No.
McCartney?
Yes.
Ellery?
No.
Kinzfather?
Yes.
Cleeman?
No.
Cedar?
Yes.
Carrie, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. We'll go to B, Engineer Services, Palmer Park Boardwalk Replacement Project.
Trice?
Thank you. One of the requirements of the grant is that we secure the services of a prime professional. The professions that are included in that are either a registered architect, engineer, or a landscape architect. So we did submit bids, or we did a request for bids, and we are recommending that approval of the low bid received from Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick, and the amount of $14,370. And the services that will be provided is they'll prepare the plans and specifications for the bid. They will also supervise the construction and the installation of the bid, and make sure that we meet all of the DNR grant requirements.
Support.
Motion made, supported, any questions?
Yeah, I got one. You said they're going to be there observing?
Pardon me?
They're going to be there watching us?
It does include, yes, some inspection services. There will be shared inspection services with the city and the engineers.
Because if I read this right, there'll be somebody from there four hours a week?
I believe so, that was specified in the, in the bid.
Not enough.
Bill, what I think we're going to do, just to help Trice out here, the, I, I thought we would use Dee Boyer from her building firm to subsidize some of the overview on that project where we can, and that could save us some additional funds.
Anybody else? Call the roll, please.
Laporte?
Yes.
McCartney?
Yes.
Ellery?
Yes.
Kinzfather?
Yes.
Cleeman?
Yes.
Koopa?
Yes.
Cedar?
Yes.
Carrie, Your Honor.
Thank you, thank you, Trice. You going to stay right there?
Yes.
All right. C, is there East China School District Facility Use Mutual Operating Agreement?
Yes, so this is a request for renewal of an operating agreement that we have with the East China School District. This agreement was started in 2005. Basically, it allows for a non-school use of their facilities, which would be for recreation department programs. Since the city does not have indoor facilities such as gymnasiums, this is an agreement that we've had with the school, and it's a renewal, and it's for the upcoming school calendar year, September 1st, 2017, through August 31st, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Questions? Call the roll, please.
McCartney?
Yes.
Ellery?
Yes.
Kinzfather?
Yes.
Cleeman?
Yes.
Koopa?
Yes.
Laporte?
Yes.
Cedar?
Yes.
Carrie, Your Honor.
Thank you, thank you, Trice.
Thank you.
We'll go to D, appointments to Boards and Commissions, I have two with your endorsement. To the Board of Review, appoint Bill Engelgall as alternate member to fill the vacancy as a one-year term expiring December 31st, 2017, and to the Housing Commission, Mary Kelly to fill the vacancy with a five-year term expiring December 31st, 2018.
Make a motion to approve.
Support.
Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Go to number 10, Claims and Accounts, July 21, 28, August 4.
Hearing no questions, Your Honor, make a motion to approve that.
Support.
Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll go to number 11, Public Comment, Public Questions. Al? You're up.
Okay, do I have to say my name again?
Please.
Okay, Owen, 3333 Ravenswood, Lot 77, Marysville. I was, every year I come to this River Fest, and the Rock Security says you need a pass to go through these trash cans and get cans and bottles out. I've never heard of such a thing about a pass getting cans and bottles out of these trash cans. And I'd like to see if you, maybe next year or the following year, if you can look in getting a new security system for this River Fest.
When do you go get the cans, morning or at night?
Um, during the day when the Rock Security is doing security during the day. And they said you can't get the cans and bottles out, they're for the cleanup crew. There ain't enough cleanup crew to get cans, to get all the cans and bottles, and there ain't enough people with passes to get cans and bottles, so I get cans and bottles every year, and Rock Security says it's for the cleanup crew.
All right. Member Kinzfather, do you have any insight at all on this?
I do not, but I guess I can check into it.
Yeah, so Al, next year, boat race time is end of July, so in June, maybe you come back and see us, and I'll let Mr. Kinzfather maybe check around and see what kind of thing we can work out for you.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
Don't forget to come back.
Okay.
All right. Any other public questions or comments?
Good evening, Councilman, Mayor.
Good evening, John.
John Shinsky, 937 Thornapple Street. Is there any update on Thornapple as to what we're going to do? I was kind of excited when you mentioned back there that there was going to be some work done in August on the streets, or did I hear wrong?
Nope, I don't think you heard wrong, Mr. Shinsky.
If we got streets that the bottoms are falling out that I don't know about, or that the city, the city people haven't been told?
I'm sorry, they haven't been told.
Are we going to do any more roads?
As soon, as soon as I do a review of the financials, we'll decide whether September or October, and yes, we do plan to do some work. Have not selected roads, so...
I just want to thank the, the DPW for coming down and putting eight patches on Thornapple. They did a good job.
Thank you, John.
Okay, but there's no update on any roads?
Come back, not in June, but probably next couple meetings, we'll have to act pretty soon.
A lot of us can depend on this, the amount of money that he, Mike Booth feels is available for this, and then we have to look at the road and what road...
Well, hasn't our road been priced out, checked out, as for a price?
We have ideas on yours and several others.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, young lady, you're up.
Hi, Laura McDonald, 1015 South 9th Street. I just have a question. I live across from Becker Metal, and the building is a mess, and their trucks are coming around on Francis, I live on the Francis side, and the road is, is just tore up. Between that and Al Simons, who's gone now because you guys fixed 9th Street, I don't have him there now, but the trucks are just tearing it up, but the building itself is a mess. I've called their parent company, who, I've emailed them several times, and they have sent me back, actually, the guy that says he owns that building has called me directly and said he has nothing to do with the parent company, which, according to the state of Michigan, they do own it, and he says he just doesn't have the money to fix the building. You know, the, the, I have coffee with their employees every morning because they're all in the parking lot. They have a break room, but he says he can't make them go in there, and I can deal with that, I, you know, I've been there 10 years, but there's weeds all over the place, the gutters are falling apart, they're falling off the building, the smoke comes in my house, and they have not wanted to make the stacks higher, and it's just a mess. And I know there's an ordinance that says when a business butts up to a community, to a residential, that they have to erect either some kind of a barrier or just be a good neighbor, and they're just not. And the answers I, I got from the city was they were there first, and then they rerouted me to whoever the, the person for the third ward is, and she said she would take care of it, and you guys must have had a, an agreement with Al Simons at the time that they could use that meter there, or the, what is it, the water?
Hydrant.
Yeah, but apparently you moved it when you did 9th Street. And she said that, and they were coming, they came down Francis and they come around, and then the trucks from Becker Metal come down 9th Street and then come around on Francis to get out of there, and that road's just not, I mean, it's a mess. And I've had chunks of street fly up into my yard, but I don't know what to do about this guy, you know, this is...
This is a good start, because we are very fortunate, David Shorkey, our code enforcement officer, is sitting right in the audience out here. So I'm pretty sure that we're going to direct Mr. Booth to direct Mr. Shorkey to take a look at that.
Okay.
And really find out what's going on.
Okay, just, yeah, just, you know, I called him, I just said, "Just be a good neighbor, just fix your building." You know, I know I have to put up with it, but just fix your building.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, oh, oh.
Rachel Kapha, 603 Clinton. So I actually have three things, but they're really quick, I swear. The first two have to do with River Fest, so I live on the corner of Fredmore and Clinton. I'm sure a lot of you saw my big construction a few years ago, know where it is, are familiar with it. And so this year, again, our house was vandalized during River Fest, and this, I've lived there seven years, and each year, something's happened. I've called the city every year, and they tell me every year that they're going to note it for next year. This year was probably a little bit worse than most. Somebody came by and knocked our fence down, knocked my neighbor's fence down, knocked the person around the corner's fence down, they threw glass bottles at the bottom of my house. Somebody came over in the morning and did pick up the bottles, I think maybe Al, who may have shown up and picked up the bottles all out of my lawn. Many years past, people have urinated on my house, they've thrown stolen property in the back of my yard, and so I just want to put it on record this year that I've complained about it, and that hopefully next year, something can be done about it. I know that there were, there was police out there this year, but they can't constantly sit there, I guess, and so I'm not sure how you address that issue. In, kind of in the same area of that complaint is the concert this year. We obviously could hear it at our house, which we expected to, because we heard it in the year past. This year, we had all the windows closed, and I was pretty tolerant of this year until the F-word started flying around, and everybody could hear it in my house, and it was, you know, "Let's get this F-ing party started, let's F-ing this, let's F-ing that," and you can hear it like it's in my backyard. And so I'd like to believe that you could turn that down, and the people who are there could still enjoy it, and I wouldn't be able to hear it in my family room. So it's my second thing I'd like to bring up. And then the third, which is unrelated to River Fest altogether, is, as many of you know, I walk with my four children every day in my double stroller, and the crosswalks in my area are basically nonexistent, particularly the one at Fredmore and Clinton, it's not there. I get hit almost every time I cross with my kids, I have two kids in a double stroller, my other two kids hold on because nobody can see them, and people are always honking their horns at me because nobody wants to stop there. And then the other one that's particularly bad is the one by La Croix's over on Clinton. Those are my three things.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Mr. Booth's writing frivolously here, so I know that he'll be on it.
Thank you.
All right? It's a nod. Chris?
Oh, boy. I second pretty much everything that she just said. Living at 215 North Third, we've, as I'm sure you all know now, put snow fence up to try to keep. Last year, we found a pair of pants in our side yard. We don't know who they belong to, but yes, there was a pair of pants left there. And my other concern is, you know, at 2:30, actually, it was about 2:30, that night, we had a young man on Mulberry Street screaming over to, I'm guessing his girlfriend, in the mall, saying it's time to go, yet she was there with four guys, and they were saying, "Don't worry, we'll get her home." And he's going, "Come on, come on." I called the police, and no one came. That concerned me a lot. My other concern is, in the, in the vein of good neighbors, I don't know if you guys ever at 2:00, 1:30, 2:00 in the morning, ever drive by the mall, but I'll tell you what, cars peel out of there now. It seems like whenever the bar closes, they're in the mall, all of a sudden, it's loud, people screaming and peeling their tires. If you go over there, you can literally see tire marks in the mall parking lot. Again, I called the police, the response I got was, "Well, if you call us when they're doing it, by the time we get there, they'd be gone, so there's nothing we can really do," which I kind of felt was pretty sad. Again, it, it comes down to being a good neighbor. I'm all supportive of businesses, but, and I realize, once people leave those businesses, it's kind of, they're on their own, but in the same vein, that parking lot belongs to the mall, which seems to me should be somewhat of a responsibility of the tenants in the mall, and I, I don't know if sleeping police officers, you know, the, the road slows would help or not, but especially during River Fest, we sat there and thought, you know, somebody's going to get killed, because cars are just tearing up and down there in the mall. And, you know, most of you know me, some of you know me, I'm not a prudish kind of guy or anything, you know, but, but man, when it gets to be after 11:00, and me and my neighbors, now I know most, along the Main Street and Third is commercial, but I have residential neighbors in the back, and residential neighbors up further near the tip, and we all kind of have the same concern, the, the noise is just ridiculous. And, and I know summertime is fun, and everyone gets out and cuts loose a little bit, but as a neighbor, if I can't sleep with my windows open on a nice night, it just doesn't feel right. So I just wanted to air that concern. Actually, I thought it was kind of nice not having the carnival this year for River Fest, on a positive. In fact, we got through Friday night, and I looked at my wife and said, "Wow, this was actually pretty nice, this wasn't too bad." But then Saturday night, I'll hell bro, please.
So Saturday night was the night with the girl screaming and the police, you called the police, but nobody showed up?
Yes, yes. Actually, twice. And it was funny, because the next day, I, and I, I'll admit it, I posted on Facebook, like, "What the hell's going on?"
What time did you, what time was that when you called them?
First time was 1:30, second time was about quarter after 2, when it was still going on. So that was a half an hour, Bill, worth 45 minutes, worth of people just screaming back and forth, and him going, "Come on, Sandy, come on, we got to go, it's okay, Bill." She was obviously drunk, and there were guys standing around her who didn't want her to leave. That's not cool. And so, and it was loud enough to wake, obviously to wake us up, so. All right, thanks, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris, thank you. Any other public questions or comments? If you're ready.
I'm ready?
Yep.
Did you want to say something? No, I'm Bureau. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome, John.
Group here. I'm from East China, John La Croix's my name, and I'm the service officer with the American Legion, Charles F. Fulton Post 382 on Clinton Avenue, and our post family is supporting September 29th as St. Clair Police and Fire Department Appreciation Day. We're, we're in the process of getting our signs, getting supporters, sponsors, and things set up so that we can have, like, our small signs there are $20 apiece. We'd sure love to see the whole city, every resident, have a sign, they're only $20, and it kind of shows the raffle, and it kind of would be a really good support for the fire department or the police department to be driving through town or, or through the neighborhood and see the support that they could get with, with the signs. Our bigger sign over here is for the businesses in town, those are $100 apiece or more, whatever the businesses would like to sponsor, and we're looking for team members, two committee And, uh, we're looking for team members, two committee members, to help support what we're doing. Um, the, uh, Chamber of Commerce is kind of jumping in. The Rotary, this meeting, the police department's gonna be with Channel Six and Paul Dingman, and they're gonna go over what we're doing too. We're just now getting the word out a little bit, but we're gonna have a, a barbecued pork dinner. It's gonna be ten dollars, but you gotta buy the tickets, uh, ahead of time so we know about how many people we're gonna have. Uh, we'll have, uh, raffles. We'll have a silent auction. Um, we'll have music by Double Play. They'll be there. And, uh, it, the whole thing's from two o'clock till nine o'clock, the raffles, the last two hours of the, of the day. But the dinner's from two to seven. And, uh, there are sheets, the, uh, Chamber of Commerce is, is gonna put some things out on their, on their, um, website to help us out. Hopefully the, um, the Rotary's gonna do the same thing. Um, entertainment, like, like I said, was double day. Our, our tickets are ten dollars apiece. Um, it would really be nice to, uh, give the police and the fire department really the support. I don't think anybody, um, has done that for Saint Clair Police Department, Fire Department, kind of get the community together and say, God, guys, thank you for risking your life or your, you know, whatever. Um, and just to say thank you. We appreciate the job that you do. Um, any questions from anybody?
Where are your yacht signs gonna be available?
Uh, they're available now. We've, we've got some at the fire department, the police department, uh, Sonia's Salon, the Legion. And we're still looking for sponsors that would like to sell our signs also. And I, we've got a third sign. It's, uh, forty-eight by thirty-six.
That doesn't meet the requirements.
That's too big.
We need a. That's to put in your window at your business. And, uh, that, uh, that's five thousand dollars. That's the, the, the big donors. That's, uh, um, we've already sold one.
McCarty wants one.
Yeah, um, we haven't forgot anything. Well, we've got letters to pass out too. We've got a letter from, uh, to send to the churches and like that so they can talk about it at the, at the churches. But, uh, I left a copy on the desk there for all of yous to look at. But, uh, I really appreciate in the American Legion family, it's the, uh, Legionnaires. It's the, uh, auxiliary and the sons of the Legion as a family. Together, we wanna sponsor that. And, uh, looking for all the help that we can get to, to do that. But thank you very much for.
Yeah, John, that's a great, this is a great thing, John, and we support this, obviously. And I wanted to let you know that in September, our first and third Mondays, you'll have meetings. And if you wanna come back or just remind me to keep pushing this out there, feel free to come back or just let us know and we'll keep reminding people.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Dewayne Martin, again, fifteen fifteen Oakland. Um, first of all, I respect, uh, the concerns the neighbors had. And I'm sure Mr. Booth and Mr. Jefferson, uh, Chief Jefferson are gonna, uh, look into those. Um, but I wanted to add how much I appreciate as a Saint Clair resident, uh, the things that the city is doing. The fireworks were the best ever, I thought. Um, the, the boat races is just tremendous for this area, um, notwithstanding the tragedy and everything. Um, and all the press that I read, it looked like the boating association and the city had done a tremendous job of handling a very difficult situation. And we certainly appreciate that. Um, I would be in support if, if any ideas could come up to, I don't know if there's any need to help the family of the person, of the throttle man or whatever, or something to show the city, you know, how much we support, um, uh, you know, what, what they were doing and whatever, so.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, anybody else? If not, I'm gonna move on to number twelve. Mayor and council, I have a few, a few things, obviously. Number one, uh, certainly prayers and thoughts out to Keith Holmes' family and the whole racing association and, and family. Offshore Race, again, did a wonderful thing for the city. And due to the circumstances, uh, you guys deserve the kudos and the, and the thanks from the people. Uh, I'll also remind people that August nineteenth, Jazz Festival downtown, it's a free event. It's a Saturday. Butch, do you wanna add anything just from the weekend? You are right on top of it all.
No, I thought everything went, uh, fairly smooth. And, you know, I apologize for the, uh, the, uh, mishaps, I guess, at people's houses. I mean, sometimes it's hard to control, but, uh, I do feel for you. I just live up the road from the event. So I did have somebody sleeping in my yard, but, uh, I mean, I don't wanna say that that's expected, but I guess, you know, I would just like to send my apologies to you and we'll try to see if we can tighten it up a little bit.
Okay, um, Mr. Booth just made me aware that, uh, this Wednesday, this Wednesday's August ninth, the second testing of the warning sirens at one o'clock countywide. So when you hear them sirens at one o'clock Wednesday, it's at the test. Anybody else have anything?
Isn't there a boat parade coming up this month?
Oh, yeah, the lighter boat parade will be August twenty-sixth. Pine River, free entry, no registration. Decorate your boat, come on down. We have a party at Malane's Marina afterwards.
I don't know how you could forget that.
You see, look at this paper. I've been taking notes on all this stuff.
What's the name of that boat parade again?
Alright.
The William Cedar Boat Parade?
That's the one, yes, yes.
Hearing nothing else, your honor. I make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone. Careful going home. Thanks for coming out.